I'd like to call the Gurnee Village Board Regular Meeting of March 4th, 2019, to order. Roll call, please, Andy.
Jacobs.
President.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Ballmas.
President.
Hood.
Here.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Six present.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First up is item as approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Jacobs. Roll call, please, Andy.
Jacobs.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Six aye.
Motion carries. Patrick, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Item number one, approval of the minutes from the February 25th, 2019 meeting. Item number two, approval request to allow Economic Development Director Ellen Dean to attend the International Council of Shopping Centers recon in Las Vegas, Nevada, from May 19th through the 22nd, 2019, at a cost not to exceed $2,000. Item number three, approval of bills for period ending March 4th, 2019, in the amount of $791,985.03.
Thank you. Do we have, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Garner. Second by trustee Thorstensen. Roll call, please, Andy.
Jacobs.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Six aye.
All right, motion carries. Petitions and communications, we have none on the agenda tonight.
Correct.
All right, so we get to move on to reports. And the first one is from Tim Miles, President and CEO of Golf Visions, and he's going to give us an update on the Bittersweet Golf Course 2018 season and the 2019 plans.
Yep, so if you want to jump up to the mic, Tim. So usually we have Bittersweet in here once a year to talk about how the course did. Dirk's in a warmer client, climate right now, so Tim, who's the President and CEO of Golf Visions, is going to take his place tonight and let you know how the course is doing.
Thank you very much. I'm here to report on the, on that succession of 2018 and our outlook for this coming year and do a comparison on some of the other courses that are in the area. 2018 will go down in history as the worst golf month ever. That was accumulation, it wasn't just Bittersweet, it was the entire marketplace and a lot of Wisconsin, most of Wisconsin, all the way down to St. Louis area. The reason for this was the weather primarily. There's not that we don't talk about much anymore in golf outside of the weather. The course itself met the, met its operating budget, but its operating net was down substantially for the year. The reason being that we had 147 playable days in 2018. We usually have about, in about 15 or 20 years ago, we would have 200 playable days. The trailing last five years, we've averaged 184. This year, we had 147. So it took a hit big time, and our net was 12, negative $12,000. We do not anticipate that to happen again, but we never know depending on what Mother Nature does. We went really from winter to summer, back to winter. On September 17th was our last day that we really had any sizable play for the season. With the, with 147 playable days, that probably cost us about $100,000 of net revenue. So this is no different than what I've experienced. As you may or may not know, I, my company has 18 courses, 12 of them are on lease arrangements. Yours is on a management contract, and I'm responsible for the lease deals on the net. So it wasn't a very pleasant year for me, but we got through it, we're getting through it, we're doing, we're doing fine, and we got everything prepped for the coming year. Besides that, in 2019, we are definitely hoping for a better weather year. We have rearranged the restaurant a little bit with the menu. We've simplified the menu to reduce our overhead. We do have a contractor there for lessons. He was up dramatically to $45,000 this past year, so that was a very high, high point. We've discontinued the fish fry, and we're now instituting a Friday night burger for $2.50. We've had very good success with that and a couple of other courses that we operate. Our maintenance equipment has been ready for the season. Some of it looks like new. We painted it with the original paint from the manufacturer, so the equipment is in excellent shape. Membership revenue is slightly below what it was in the past. That doesn't bother me, or Dirk, or anybody. It's, you know, we're probably going to be down about, right now, we'll probably be down about 10 memberships. We have all of our people in place, and frankly, we're way ahead of everything except, you know, we're just waiting for the weather to change and Mother Nature to be a little better to us, kinder to us this year than in the past. How does this compare, how does Arkham Course, your course, compare to other courses in the marketplace? One of the more upscale courses in the marketplace, it's not one that we operate, was down 25% last year. 25%, probably equated to $400,000, $500,000 at one golf course. And so typically, our marketplace was down anywhere from 3% to 13%. We did have a couple of courses in our portfolio that were slightly up. One of those is Chapel Hill, which had a golf course closed right down the street from it, so we benefited greatly from the play that was there. Some of it came over to Chapel Hill. But we're looking for brighter days. I know that there has been a lot of negativity about golf in the press and nationally and just basically in our industry. We, we truly believe that this last year was a weather year that was just, you can go to anybody and then just say, "God, we can't have another year like that, can we?" And so it, with the press and with the people saying that, you know, golf is down, it is down, obviously, but not that much. And so we're expecting for having a normal year, and we should be able to meet the projections that we have this year. And so with that said, all I can say, you know, we, we just want to have a decent weather year this year, and things will be going really good. The golf course is in excellent condition. You have a facility, the negative 12,000 did not include $44,000 in amusement fees. So for the village, you're really, we look at it as a positive, you know, the positive effect. And so we'll get back to normal this year. We, we really, we really are looking forward to getting to operate. But everything, everything out there is pretty much under control. The clubhouse, the maintenance building, the equipment, everything is in very good shape and very well taken care of. There's no deferred maintenance or anything, and we do not intend to do anything or to defer anything this coming year with our operating budget. Any other questions?
May open up to trustees, questions? Bittersweet's year, next year?
Yeah, I mean, it was a tough season weather-wise, but they've done a good job squirreling away some money in the bank, so there was money in the bank to cover that. There's no need for them to come to the village looking for funds. And as Tim said, I mean, the clubhouse, equipment, the course, they've all made, they've made great progress since they've taken over management, management of the course. I've got that stuff up to snuff, so now let's just continue to make little improvements around the edges and, as he said, hope for better weather, so.
Yeah, it's pretty significant, um, an average of 200 days that you can golf down to 147, that's...
Yeah, it was really, really a disastrous year, and we just, and what happens in golf is that because you're so, anymore you're so subject to the weather, because golf is down, you know, it used to be common on a course like this on a weekend day, you might have 250 to 275 players. Now if we have 200 to 225, that's really an excellent weekend day. But what happens is, you're always hoping that the next month, you're going to catch, you're going to start getting some of that back, or you're not possibly, you know, can we have another month like this? And this last year, it was horrific. No March, no hardly any April. May was lousy, most rain in, ever in Chicago. June, we had, if it wasn't extremely rainy, and particularly every 13 days that we have on weekends, we're all affected in one way or another. We got about 40% of the revenue on those 13 holiday weekends, like 4th of July is usually a four-day week. That was a, you know, $4,000, $5,000 versus $10,000. But you do that, so it makes us feel stupid, because we, we say, "Oh, we're going to come back, we're going to come back." And every month this past year, it got worse. We had a run of 13 days in July, which were good, 13 days. But that was highlighted by some rainfall that occurred in June, and then in July, and when it, when it wasn't raining, it was hot as blazes. August was so-so. September, I said, as I said, the first 15 days were okay, and then we got blitzed. We just didn't have any fall, so.
Wow.
That was a...
Well, thank you for coming tonight and updating us, and whether people are golfing out there or not, it's the most beautiful piece of property in the village.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two, we have a presentation from Darrell Blennis. Darrell is the Executive Director of the Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency for the last 12 years. Michael Hawthorne from the Tribune did a newspaper story about two months ago about unlined coal ash pits in Waukegan, and it did prompt some residents here at the microphone to express concern about the safety of their drinking water. So we thought we needed to get, instead of letting us address it, we thought we would have Darrell address it, and in the meantime, there's been a lot of expansion, a lot of changes going on with Jawa, so we thought it'd be a nice time to have him update the board on a lot of things. So welcome, Darrell.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to put out the new logo we have, so that's new. We're very excited about it. My staff was on me for about five years to update the logo, but I've done a few logo updates in my past career, was a little gun-shy about doing a logo update, but we got it done, and I think it's, it's really nice, so.
It does.
Expansion update, we've been quite busy. We're putting in 19 miles of new pipe to go out to these new members. Over $70 million of construction in engineering, so it's quite busy. Lot of easements, as you could imagine, been acquired, permitting, state, LCDOT, Army Corps. You can imagine, it's been, it's been quite a venture. But we have some good news. To remind you, the North Group expansion is Lindenhurst, Lake Villa, Grammer Park, and Foxlake Hills. And the West Group expansion is Wakanda and Volo. So the North Group is now officially complete, or I like to say substantially complete. The first two pieces were through your community along Alma Road, which got water to Grammer Park, then up Hutchins, which got water to Lindenhurst. And let's see, Grammer Park got water service on July 6th, 2016, and Lindenhurst got water service December 2017. The next two pieces were a little bit delayed due to easement acquisition in the Roundy Beach area. Took a little while, up around 83 to get all the easements. But the meter's running now, so February 22nd, both communities started taking water, and we sent out the first water bill this morning, so really excited about that. These lower rates for you. The West Group is under construction. The first leg is complete, and that leg was from our booster pumping station in Libertyville. You may see those three large stand pipes along Route 45, that's where our booster pumping station is located. Along the Combed Rightway, down to Allegheny, down to Peterson Road, that was the first leg. That's complete. The other four bit packages are under construction. The order was, let's see, bit packages one, four, two, three, and five. I see why this, this was the order. But they should all be done in time for the water delivery of September 1st, that's what our schedule shows. And despite the weather, we're still on track. You know, we've had some cold days the last few weeks, but they're still making good progress. Another good thing to note is a bit package five is the delivery structures for the two communities, but also Round Lake also took advantage of the opportunity to install another delivery structure. So they're going to have two delivery points of two different legs, which is going to help their redundancy. So the West Group provided Round Lake an opportunity to have a more robust system. So the expansion is, is more than just water rates. It's also about proving the reliability redundancy for some key members. Regulatory update, they're always busy in Springfield. We do our best to encourage them to apply science to their regulations, and we're actively involved through the Water Utility Council. Bill Susi, our Operations Director, is actually on the Water Utility Council and is quite active, and he and I, we review those regulations and we sit in our comments. One of the changes that's coming in 2019, I think it's going to be going to the Governor's Desk at some point soon, is increasing the chlorine residual from .2 to .5, and that's a response to the Legionella outbreaks that took place. We actually fought against these changes because we don't believe that they're going to be that effective, but it's going to be the law at some point. But please note that the maximum contannal level's four, and the new law is 0.5. So even though it's going up, it's still well within the MCL. Coal ash. Put together a little flyer for you, for you to look at. We get a lot of questions over, you know, throughout the year, over the last several years, about coal ash and other things. We get questions about naturally occurring things in the environment that get into groundwater and into stormwater, as well as non-naturally occurring things. The good news is, Lake Michigan has 1.2 quadrillion gallons of water, and it dilutes everything that we test for. We do a lot of testing. We test for all regulated compounds, and we also test for several non-regulated compounds. All that data's on our website. We're very transparent. All of our reports are there, www.clcjawa.com. I encourage you to go there, and if you've got any questions on our, what's actually in the water, check your CCR. We also have more data on our website as well. So the good news is, is that we don't detect any of these metals from the coal ash in excess of the MCL. So your water is safe to drink, always has been, and is currently safe to drink. Questions, comments?
Thank you. Gurnee is one of the, one of the founding members of Jawa, thanks to Mayor Richard Welton. So the current mayor always serves as one of the directors, separate responsibility, and trustee Ballmas is my alternate on meetings that I can't make on a monthly basis. We try to keep you guys updated, and Patrick's on the Executive Committee with the other village administrators that kind of meet separately. But this is an opportunity, anything you've heard or read about water, water expansion, this is helping keep our rates down.
On a couple financial notes, the property tax for CLC Jawa is going away. We made the last payment in February for the GO bonds. If you remember, we built it originally 30 years ago, it was half of it was on the general obligation bond, and the other half was revenue bonds. So the GO bonds are done, they're paid off. Paid off in February, so that's good. And the revenue bonds start being paid off next year, so your rates are going down. We just did our budget discussions, and no rate increase for Jawa next year, so we're holding rates for you. And then next year, you'll start to see the drops due to the bond payoffs.
Another thing that was good with the expansion is the plant's 25 years old, starting to hit 30, and it needs, obviously, maintenance and improvements with all the new communities coming on that will help defray the cost of maintaining. So instead of the original nine communities, having to pay for all the upgrades now, it would be spread over a much bigger pool.
Yeah, in two respects, you have additional demand, means there's more gallons to spread those costs out. This means your cost is lower. In addition, we negotiated $50 million in connection fees that they're paying in, they're starting to pay in next year. The West Group already got their schedule approved. The North Group will have their schedule probably approved in April. We should be ready in April for that. $50 million over the next 20 to 30 years. That's going to help us take care of those capacity improvements. In fact, there's probably more there than necessary for those capacity improvements, so there may be some funds available for some redundancy reliability improvements. We're just doing a comp plan Phase 2 study on that right now. It's not complete yet, but it's still in process. We're trying to identify ways to make the system more robust, so the funds are there for those kinds of improvements as well.
And I would like to personally thank Darrell. He has accepted a position in Naperville, a wonderful position, and we're very excited for him, but it is bittersweet to see him leave, because the, this expansion would not have happened unless you absolutely had the patience of a saint. Dealing with all the different communities and the legal agreements was a lot, and then all the rightaways, and I mean, it's just been a huge, huge project, as you could imagine, bringing water into... So personal thanks.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
You did a great job. I know the board is appreciative, and we're very appreciative of our Lake Michigan water and our very low water rates.
If you recall, I took, all the charter members had to agree unanimously to allow a new member to come in, so we had to get nine charter members to agree, and that took some work, but we got it done.
That was a lot of finessing. So questions for Darrell about any of the expansion or anything, though? Trustee Thorstensen?
I know, we recall the timeframe was in the last year, maybe nine months. You came to us, I think, then as a charter member, asking for our approval of consideration of how you should expand to which communities and what type of a funding mechanism. So how often do you anticipate doing that? Because I do believe that it was said at the time that you had a good amount, or it was discussed with us, that you had still a good amount of capacity.
Correct. We did our comp plan Phase 1 analysis. We determined we have about 11 million gallons of excess capacity that we could still use for additional expansion. Internally, we took 4 million gallons off that 11, just in case our numbers were off. And 4 million gallons is quite a bit, by the way. It's three Grayslakes average day demand, so it just kind of gives you a little bit of scale. So there's 7 million gallons per day. All communities are interested. We get calls all the time from engineering firms representing these communities, asking us if we're interested. We're doing, it was sort of a consensus along the board to finish the redundancy reliability phase of our comp plan, because there may be an opportunity for additional connection fees, to see if that was something that, if they wanted to really add to the system as far as reliability redundancy, that would be one of the ways to help pay for it. So we're going to finish that study. We're targeting the summer, that's the timeframe for the comp plan Phase 2. I mean, it's very comprehensive, we're looking at a lot of different things. So we're going to work through that issue, and then I tell those communities, when that's done, we'll get back to you. But remember, it has to be unanimous. Now we have 13 communities that require approval for a new member. There is other classifications that don't require that unanimity. There could be customer class, where it's via contract, where they don't have a voting right. That's one option, that's in our governing documents. We haven't done that so far. We have the charter members and the expansion, they came in as full members. So that's still there, that's, that's still a possibility. The board's working through that issue, and at the conclusion of the summer, I imagine these towns will be back to see if, if you're interested.
Thank you.
All right, it's good to see you, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
I won't see you again, so I'll miss you.
I'll be around.
I know, it's been a long time together. All right, it's the end of reports, right?
Correct.
All right. No old business?
Correct.
All right, I, new business. Item number one, approval of ordinance 2019...
12.
12. Granting a special use permit for a drive-through facility without a bailout lane for 5414, Route 132, Suite 400 pursuant to the Gurnee zoning ordinance.
Sure. So you had a memo from our associate planner, Clara, on this. Duncan Donuts at 5414 Grand was before the PCB on February 6th, requesting a special use permit for the establishment and operation of a drive-through without a bailout lane. It is zoned C2 PUD. A drive-through lane is allowed by right in C2 as long as it meets certain use standards found in the zoning ordinance, which Duncan cannot meet all these requirements, specifically the bailout lane. The service window they're looking to install is on the east wall of the building, and they're planning on using that existing 12-foot wide circulation lane to service this window. As it related to the bailout lane, that wasn't a huge concern for the Planning and Zoning Board, but they were pretty concerned about the lack of parking spaces directly in front of the building that would be removed as a result of the installation of the drive-through. Looking at removing 11 parking spaces and, in front of the building, up towards the Grand Avenue side there, and that's where the drive-through lane would come through. To address this elimination of those parking spaces, Duncan reached out to Baymont and in Suites, which is directly north, and secured 15 parking spaces, so their employees of the building could park at these remote spaces. The parking agreement's good till November 30th, 2026, and they have two extensions on it for consecutive 10-year periods each. With the parking reductions, Duncan is requesting that the board take into consideration the parking needs of the other tenants on site, that they don't have as much parking demand, they have different peak hours. We had our traffic consultant take a look at the proposal, as well as 14 other Duncan facilities in the area. Consultant found that the maximum wait time in the drive-through was about four minutes, and that the most cars they saw queued at any one time was eight. This proposal's got stacking for about nine to 10 cars before it starts to conflict with customer parking stalls. Consultant also noted, noted that a majority of the business, the Duncan drive-through, occurs before 11:00 a.m., and that about 65% or more of it was conducted via the drive-through. So based on this testimony, given at the meeting, the PCB is forwarding a unanimous recommendation by a vote of 42, subject to three conditions that they put upon this. One, that the parking agreement be executed in substantial conformance with that that was presented with the petition. That the parking space nearest the front door of the establishment be converted and striped and signed to a turnaround area, and that the property owner consents to these changes. So as I said, made it through the PCB, and a 42 vote, and is before you for consideration tonight.
All right. Questions for staff or Patrick? I don't know if the petitioner's here. Trustee Thorstensen?
Sure, I'll go first.
Okay, trustee Ross?
Did, did the property owner agree to the changes that they recommended?
Tracy is nodding yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Thorstensen?
Well, I'm pleased that this finally has come to us. I am a coffee drinker, and I do frequent the place, and I could tell you that I'm sure that the business would not be impacted, because I'm there enough to do my own drive-through studies. I, I just wish that, and I know it's nothing that we could tag on this project, but we all know that the parking lot in that entire area is horrendous, and it's cobbled together by several owners.
Well, there's two owners, so you're talking about north of this property.
Correct.
There's two owners, the, one that owns the larger portion of it. Yes, it's a private parking lot, and we can notice them and call them, and, but it's private property.
Right. That's why I know, it's not at all related to this project.
Yeah. There's somebody that is interested in one of the outlots towards the front, who is, may try to work to create, or to reinstitute the business association, and they may be able to put pressure on the owner. So it comes up frequently, but again, it's private property, and it's not...
I spoke to that person.
He's not, yeah, he's not owned, he doesn't, oh, he doesn't own anything that's involved with this site, though.
Right. Motion to approve? Second.
I have a motion from trustee Thorstensen, second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please.
Jacobs.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Six aye.
All right, now both of our Duncan Donuts will have a drive-through. All right, motion carries. Item number two, approval of ordinance 201913, granting a special use permit for recreation use on property located at 1350 Tri-State Parkway, Suite 128 pursuant to the Gurnee zoning ordinance.
Sure. Again, it's a memo from our associate planner Clara on this. Extreme flight simulation was before the PCB on February 20th, looking for a special use permit to allow the establishment and operation of a recreational use, specifically a flight simulation facility at 1320 Tri-State. It's I-2, General Industrial, with a special use permit for Office Industrial Park in this area. Take up about 2,900 square feet of an approximate 55,000 square foot multi-tenant building, be equipped with one flight simulator, which the public can experience the simulation of piloting a plane. A maximum of two customers can be in the simulator at any one time, along with a... with a professional to help them through that process. Plan on employing one full-time flight instructor, three to four part-time receptionists. Always have one employee on site typically and one receptionist. Open seven days a week. The hours were in the memo, typically mid-morning through early evening. There are a couple other recreational uses out in Grand Tri-State. You've got Ultimate Gymnastics out there and Jump America. Following the testimony at the PZB, they are forwarding a favorable recommendation on a 5-0 vote. So, now it's ready for your consideration.
All right. This business is open and operating, so is this a catch-up? Okay. Questions from the trustees? Trustee Jacobs?
What is, what else is in this building?
This is a building that has only child.
And two men? Aren't two men in this one too? Two men in a truck?
Are they in this one? They could be.
Okay.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion from trustee Hood, second by trustee Jacobs. Roll call, please.
Jacobs.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Six aye.
All right. Motion carries. All right. Item number three is a continuation of our budget workshop number one for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. And I think we picked up with-
Yep.
-special funds.
Brian's going to pick us back up at the 911 fund.
All right. So, now we'll get into, as Pat said, kind of the other funds here. This will move pretty quickly and then we'll review capital. So, looking at the 911 fund, as I mentioned earlier, this is just the pass-through for the new joint ETSB with the city of Zion. Fund balance is always going to stay at zero. A couple of the big things that we're looking at in here is replacing the MDCs in the squads, so that's the computers in the squads, along with that EMD software that we've talked about a couple times, and then finishing off the, or outfitting the shift leader for a seventh full position in the communications center. Looking at the motor fuel tax fund, this is the fund that accepts motor fuel tax. We use it for the road resurfacing program. We let the balance roll over every other year. So, we only utilize this every other year. Fund balance at the end of this year is expected to be about $957,000. So, next year we'll spend that and what we expect to earn next Impact fee fund. Now, this is the one where we transfer 200,000, 250,000. We've done the past 400,000 to offset the sidewalk and stormwater management program in the capital fund in 131. So, this year we have 200,000 for that. Fund balance at the end of this year, anticipated to be at the beginning of next year, just over a million dollars. So, that'll come down to just under a million dollars by the end of next year. Police restricted revenue. This is, this fund accounts for revenues that the police get through seizures and fines that are restricted as to how they can be used. We've got about 100,000 in here. No plans to use it, but at some point in the future, we could choose to use this to offset certain police capital purchases if we wanted to. Capital improvement fund. Total expenditures here next year, almost 6.3 million. Revenue's almost 4.9. This is where we are using the surplus transfer that we anticipate transferring at the end of this year. So, a deficit here of almost 1.4 million. Fund balance projection, obviously the 2.1 going in. At the end of next year, we get back to around that $720,000 range. This is the one we said, over the next couple of years, look to get that back up to a million. And again, this is just, this is all non-water and sewer capital or general government capital as it's referred to. Bond fund. This accounts for the debt service on the village's general obligation bond and some professional services in here in conjunction with managing that. 1.4 million anticipated to start the fiscal year. Don't anticipate that to go anywhere. Add to it slightly. Again, these bonds expire, the last payment is December of calendar year 2022. And then just a note there about the park district bonds, not included in this fund. We pay for those out of the general fund, but just to note when they expire to next year, 390,000 a year. So. Special service area. This is the debt service on the bonds to extend water and sewer utilities to the Hickory Haven subdivision. Now, we have two more years left on this. So, they will expire next year. Just bond payment, property tax from that subdivision, 41,472 revenue side, and then the bond payment on the expenditure side. Golf course one, golf course fund here. Fund balance is about 150,000. As we, as mentioned earlier in the presentation, we haven't had to give any money or, you know, subsidize the operations. They are fully independent and have enough cash flow to maintain operations. So, no activity here. Water and sewer operating fund. So, really the water and sewer system is made up of two funds, the water and sewer operating and then the water and sewer capital fund. Just point out total budgets here. Revenues on this side, almost 9.4 million, expenditures of almost 8.1 million, positive budget surplus here of 1.3. You'll see how that interacts with the water and sewer capital fund on this side. And here, we have revenues of just over 5 million, but expenditures of almost seven. And that's where we get that negative variance. Included in this is the Knolls Road Tower. Obviously, that's the big project. And there's about 1.7 million in other capital. I'm going to get a slide. Next slide kind of brings all this together here. So, look at combined fund balance projection at the beginning of the year, 5.2 million. As I noted before, we had budgeted deficit of 633,000 this year. That's 500,000 now that Jawa kept their rates flat. So, that obviously came down. We had planned to use fund balance to keep up with capital until, as Darryl mentioned earlier, the rate drops next year and the year after. So, this is a completely planned drawdown of fund balance. We put in a multi-year rate plan that calls for a 3% increase in water rates, May 1st of 2019, and then one more, May 1st of 2020, and then that plan expires. So, at that point, we'll revisit, we can revisit water rates. As you mentioned earlier, Jawa hold their, held their rate flat at 283. Included in the budget is 293. So, that, that's about 126,000. Also have continuing year two of five-year meter exchange program to basically change the meter reading piece, not the actual meters, but the way it's read. So, we can do that, I guess, from water towers or from the desks at Village Hall here without having to send, send Public Works folks out. Obviously, it gives us a huge customer service increase with how we can get information basically on demand if anybody called in. And then the timing of the debt service for the IEP loan, we've talked about that a few times here. And with that, I'll have Tom walk through the results initiative.
All right. So, for the operating fund for water and sewer for 1819 results, we, we're in the multi-year process of replacing fire hydrants and to date, we are in year three. So, we have replaced three hydrants out of 10 this year. So, we have seven more to do this fiscal year and then we'll continue that on the year four for next year. We inspected 23 water distribution mainline valves. This is an ongoing process of going through every valve in town. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, we went through and exercised every valve. Now, we are going back through them and replacing bushings, packing nuts, everything, and new valves that need to be replaced. So, this is kind of a as-needed basis as we're going through. So, even though there's only 23, we can't do that in the winter. So, it's kind of a summer, fall, spring, summer, fall project. We exercised all the auxiliary valves. Those are all the valves in front of the fire hydrants. Those have all been taken care of this past year. So, those are all done, looked at, checked as well. And we are completing SCADA upgrades to four of our lift stations, the Route 41, Merritt Club, Lee, and Osprey. And for next year, we'll continue year four of our replacement program for hydrants. We'll continue the water distribution mainline valve inspection. We'll continue the next three, which will be the last three of our SCADA system, Martins, Westgate, and Route 21. And as Brian said, we're starting year two of our meter Orion changeout. That'll be a big project going in for the next five years. So, any questions on that, where we're at with that?
It's a lot of activity. Questions about water and sewage? Okay.
All right. We'll take a look at police and fire pension here. Just reminder, pension funds are funded by three things. Employer contributions, employee contributions, and then investment earnings. Looking at the police pension fund and employer contribution here, totals 2.27 million. That's about 65,000 or 2.9% from last year. Employee contributions, about 930,000, and then investment income at 3.5 million. And then just to note that two years ago, we changed how we budgeted for investment income. Rather than trying to predict what the market's going to do, we budgeted at our actual assumption of 7%. So, at any time throughout the year, we can see how we're doing against that benchmark. On the fire side, employer contribution here, 1.87 million. It's up 59,000, about 3.2%. Employees contributions of 611,000, and then investment income at that 7% at 2.8 million. And then both contribution in net assets of 3.5 million. Questions on police and fire pension before I move? The Northeast Lake County Consolidated Emergency Telephone Systems Board. Chris gave me the nod, so I think I got them all right. This is the joint ETSB fund with the city of Zion that, that really accounts for everything that happens with, with that ETSB. Couple of the big ones in here is the generator that's going to be split between the PD budget and this budget. Actually, it's a backup generator, I believe, at the police department. The MDC replacement, the EMD software, the supervisor position outfitting that seventh position. And then we have conservatively put together a budget that reserves about 150,000 every year for capital here. At some point, we are going to need to replace some software and that is a major expense in the communications center. So, we are planning for that and putting money away for that. Getting to capital. Capital program is funded through three different funds. Motor fuel tax fund we talked about, that's road resurfacing program, the capital improvement fund, the non-water and sewer capital, and then the water and sewer capital. Looking at total dollar amounts, about almost 15 million, 14.9 million. Obviously, that's up this year due to the Knolls Road Tower. Water and sewer fund, water and sewer capital fund is about 46.6%, capital improvement fund 42%, and then the motor fuel tax fund 11% of that. We break all that down into five systems. Water and sewer system, transportation system, vehicles, equipment, building improvements and stormwater management. Obviously, the biggest one this year is water and sewer system at just almost 6.6 million or 44.1% followed by transportation system at just over 5 million. Vehicles and equipment, just over 1.8 million. Buildings and building improvements, just over 1.2, and then stormwater management at 300,000. Digging a little deeper into each one of those systems. Total transportation system spending here, 3.3 million. Just a couple of the bigger roads, Tri-State, Data, Kingsport, Woodlake. Obviously, we talked about the Grand and Hunt Club intersection. That's a big intersection improvement there. We also have included here the East Grand enhancements that could include Quiet Zone that we had talked about, and obviously extending some sidewalks on the west side of the community to tie into the Rowland Savannah. Continue that project. Just a map of the streets proposed for next year. Stormwater management. I think David covered this in his presentation as well, that kind of phase one of that Providence Village. And then really a placeholder for any properties that might come up on the flood plan that we want to take advantage of and try to, and try to acquire. So, just $300,000 budget here. Buildings and improvements. Total budget here, 1.2 million. Big ones in here, obviously, Fire Station 3. Police Department has some HVAC issues that Chief Smith had mentioned and then that second generator. And then here at Village Hall, we also have some HVAC and get the roof done finally after a two-year project here, but get this, get this roof done here. Water and sewer system, obviously the big one here. Almost 6.6 million. Knolls Road Tower. Ferndale Water Main, as, as Tom had mentioned, try to get Ferndale, Waveland, maybe some of Delaney done this year depending on how the bids come back. And then sewer lining spot repairs are also included in this budget. Vehicles and equipment, total of 1.8 million. My big ones here in the police department, four squads, two unmarked. Fire department ambulance that Chief Kavanaugh mentioned, and then in Public Works, two plows and three pickup trucks that are split between general capital and water and sewer capital here. Also, some technology improvements and things like that included in here. And that's it for capital. Happy to answer any questions.
It's like four months' worth of work that you just did in three hours. I know, and again, a tremendous amount of work goes into this budget and then we spend so much time with advanced work. We don't do a lot of it here, but there was, there's a lot of work, a lot of time goes into this. So, first blush, because we have an opportunity to ask for changes, make changes, and then discuss it at March 18th if we need to.
Yeah, there'll be, some numbers will change between now and the final budget. I mean, like Brian said, with the snow and ice control, the Jawa rate. So, there'll be some tweaks here and there. We'll point those out. If you have anything you think of after tonight, obviously, we still have some time to make changes. So, just give us a call, let us know and we can talk through those. Otherwise, we will plan on bringing this forward for the public hearing on April 1st before the regular village board meeting and then have it on the regular agenda for consideration. So.
Yeah. So, think about, I mean, there's no wiggle room because we're relying on very volatile revenue sources. So, we, you know, it's right to the penny on everything, but this will depend, this will drive what we spend next year on services. So, we also don't want to make a mistake either. So, hats off, Pat.
Yeah. Hats off to staff.
All the department heads.
Reach out.
We do have an executive session tonight too to talk about some personnel issues. Thank you, guys. Oh, I have to do, okay. But we're going to go into-
Public comment first.
Yeah. We're going to go into executive session. Before we do, we'll do public comment. We don't, I don't know how long we'll be in there.
Good evening. You want my name and address?
Name. You don't, address is voluntary.
It's all, I did-
Then you're fine.
My name's Ed. Ed Mills. I know it doesn't seem like winters leaving us, but I wanted to say that the Public Works Department has done an outstanding job clearing the streets.
Thank you.
This whole season's been unpredictable with the weekend hours, holiday hours, night hours, but they have done a fantastic job. But I just wanted to make sure that the Public Works Department knows that we do appreciate it and-
Thank you.
Hats off to the Public Works Department. So, removal. Another comment, just for the record on the bittersweet, he said it so fast. I don't know if you all caught it, but he says he's doing away with the fish fry. And I really like the fish fry and I think a lot of other people like the fish fry. And I did have a chance to speak with Mr. Miles and he was very gracious. He said he talked to Dirk, but I don't know if the village has any impact, but from a goodwill standpoint and during Lent, that fish fry was packed.
Really?
And I don't, maybe not make a lot of money all the time, but if they had it partially during the year, especially during Lent, it would be appreciated because it's a go-to place, I think, in gurney for a fish fry on Friday night. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, that's the feedback that we need. Thank you.
Brian Horrith. I live at 4981 South Road. And I just wanted to say that tonight at Joakim's meeting, they announced that municipalities will be paying for independent air testing of ethylene oxide, and they indicated that gurney is taking part in that. And I just wanted to say thank you for participating in that. Thank you.
My name's Jim Henning. I live on Westfield Drive and I also am here to say thank you for your part and meeting with our state senator and with the members of other municipalities in the area. And I'm happy to hear that we are part of looking to gather some data so we can know what we're dealing with on this important issue. I'd like to ask that we remain vigilant and withhold the timelines that are established, both in the request for proposal and, and getting the data. But again, thank you all very much for- But again, thank you all very much for all the work you've done to get us this far.
Okay. All right. I'm going to close the floor. Public comment, and I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'm moved.
Oh, yes. Our attorney needs to cite the reason.
Actually, this is under exception, C1, to discuss a specific compensation package.
All right. Now, do I have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Trustee Ballmas, second by Trustee Ross?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Jacobs.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
I think we're going to take a vote on the action in executive session tonight, so.